Great. It is September 20th, 2022 of our regular council meeting, calling to order. Notice the public that we may vote to go into executive session for legal advice on any of the agendized items. Roll call, please.
Mayor DC.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
I'm here somewhere.
Councilmember House.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Salas.
Too much coffee. Press in.
Councilmember Shimoney.
Hi, everybody. I'm here.
Thank you. Councilmember Shimoney, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Absolutely. Please stand if you're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The mission of the City Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all. Councilmember Aslan, our land acknowledgement, please.
Mayor, I've been trying to pull up the agenda for a few minutes here and having some connectivity issues.
All right. Councilmember McCarthy, then?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll do this today. The city, excuse me, the Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, water mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations, who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. That brings us to agenda item four, approval of minutes from previous meetings. 4A is the consideration and approval of minutes from the more mentioned dates within the agenda. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple minor suggestions. So I'll make a motion and include those in it, and then if anybody else has other changes, they can do an amendment. So, I move to approve all of the minutes listed in the packet with as written, except for the following changes. I just note that it's difficult to s- it's good to see that we are trying to catch up on the meeting minutes. When the meeting minutes are written a long time after the meeting, it's difficult to remember all the details. So I had to go back and watch the videos on these two items. So, November 17th, 2020, item 5B regarding Chris Kemerly. He was appointed to the Housing Commission. There was a typo. The vote was actually four to three, with Mr. Aslan, Ms. Salas, and Ms. Whelan voting no. So make that minor change. And then, the meeting minutes of December 1st, 2020, item 9E, as in echo. Watch the video on this one, too. And to reflect the conversation that took place, I suggest adding the following prior to the documentation of the vote on the original motion to address the emergency housing declaration. So please add, "Council members McCarthy and Aslan stated that they strongly agreed that there is a housing crisis, and that they supported the housing crisis resolution, but that they could not support changing the wording from crisis to the word emergency." So with those two minor changes, I'm moving to approve all of the listed minutes.
I second that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Now we're down to agenda item five of public participation. I do have a few cards here, starting with Louise Porter.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Louise Porter, and I'm a Public Information Officer with the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Assistance. And I just got here last night, and I saw online this morning that this was happening, and I was like, you know, this is a great way to let y'all know that there has been a declaration for the flooding, and it is for the flooding that occurred July 23rd through August 28th, and it is for Coconito County, and it extends to all the counties that surround it, even going up into Utah. So any county that touches this primary county is also eligible. So people don't realize sometimes that during declarations, the U.S. Small Business Administration provides low interest loans, low-interest-rate loans for homeowners and renters, as well as businesses of all sizes, and most private nonprofits. So, the first thing people should do is they should fill out the application. And right now, we have, if they are interested in seeing if they are eligible. The rates are as low as 1.688, and it's all very individual. So the best thing to do is, we actually have some customer service reps that are currently at the Health and Human Services Building and the Birch Conference Room, and it's 2625 North King Street in Flagstaff, and they are there Mondays through Fridays, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And they did open this morning at 8:00, and they are closing on Thursday, October 6th, at the close of business. If someone would like to start the application at home or online, the best way to do it is to go to disasterloanassistance, all one word, .sba.gov. And people are also welcome to call our customer service center at 1-800-659-2955, and they can help people walk through it. There is a deadline, and it is November 18th for physical damage. So we have three different sorts of programs. We have business physical, home physical, and economic injury. Economic injury is to help businesses that have been affected keep the doors open and keep going through the recovery period. And that deadline isn't until June 19th of 2023. So it's always set nine months out from the declaration date, but the physical deadline is always two months. So it's November 18th, and that's a hard deadline. So I want to encourage everybody to get that deadline, or to get that application in if they would like to see if they are eligible, and see what the terms would be, because you don't, I always encourage people to put the application in before they decide whether or not they want to accept it, because if someone is approved for a loan, it becomes an option. They are not required to take it. They could look at the terms and see if that worked for them. And also, a lot of times, people just put damage on a credit card. Well, even if it's already paid for on a credit card, it's still eligible, because credit card rates are very expensive, and that could save a family quite a bit of money. By going in and getting this, taking, getting approved for this could save them quite a bit of money. And, ah, no pressure, I'm out of time, but I'm gonna be here, so if anyone has any questions, I'll be here after.
Thank you, Ms. Porter, for the information. And would you mind, please, emailing council that information, so we can pass it along? That's council@flagstaffaz.gov.
Yes, sir. I will do that this evening, or when I get back. So, like I said, I just got here this morning, or last night, so thank you so much for your time.
Excellent. Thank you. Neil Chapman. Come on down. I watched a lot of prices, right, as a kid, just so you know.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time. So in December 2021, the Departments of Agriculture, Interior, and Homeland Security, through the Federal Emergency Management Agency, announced the formation of the Wildland Fire Mitigation and Management Commission. The commission is tasked with forming federal policy recommendations and strategies on ways to better prevent, manage, suppress, and recover from wildfires, and provide recommendations for aerial firefighting equipment needs. The call for nominations for the non-federal members was issued in March, and more than 500 applications were received, and 36 non-federal members were selected to serve on the commission. Along with 11 federal members, the commission will be co-chaired by the Secretary of Agriculture, Secretary of Interior, and the FEMA Administrator. Designated staff representing these three agencies are Merrill Harrell, USDA Deputy Undersecretary for Natural Resources and Environment, Joan Mooney, Interior Principal Deputy Assistant Secretary for Policy Management and Budget, and Dr. Lori Moore Merrill, U.S. Fire Administration Administrator under FEMA. My application to the commission was selected as one of two municipal representatives, along with Kathleen McIntyre, Forest Health Program Manager with the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. This commission appointment will allow the Flagstaff Fire Department and the City of Flagstaff an opportunity to directly influence federal policies that greatly affect the fire-adapted landscape that surrounds our community. The first in-person meeting of the commission was last week in Salt Lake City. This meeting was dedicated to setting up an agreed-upon schedule and structure and create 11 workgroups. The individual topics that the workgroups will cover are aviation, response coordination, public health and infrastructure, communities, landscapes, post-fire recovery, national cohesive strategy, science, data, and technology, appropriations, workforce, and systemic change options. The first topics, we will cover our aviation and the national cohesive wildland fire management strategy. The aviation report is an accelerated process, and that's going to be due on January 30th. All other workgroup reports will be due in September 2023, one year from our first meeting. As the commission progresses, I will continue to provide updates. Thank you, guys, so much for your time this afternoon.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Neil. Stephen Per.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. So, I think this is the third time I'm addressing you, and 10 days ago, I sent you an email. And I am a resident of Savannah Way, 1640, for the record. And one of the things that came to light after these five floods that flooded Savannah is the water didn't come down as projected by the model. It came through a culvert at the north side of the apartments. That culvert, which you have undersized your drainage that goes out of it, which is in violation of your code and county code. I've asked you this for the fourth time, to bring it into compliance, and therefore avoid that flooding coming out. It's responsible for approximately 80 to 90% of the flooding in Savannah Way, according to your people and our geologist that lives on our street. Okay? So, please, use your money. You have a drainage right, right behind three of my neighbors. Put in a larger drain, take it to the Rio. Now, the issue comes up of money, and I had mentioned this to you before. You know what your budget is. You know how much money you have. You have plenty of tens of millions of dollars available to your hands that you can take care of this. I come to my attention that the state, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but I've heard the state has given you $1.4 million to address some of the issues of Pipeline West. Fine, if you don't use that money, again, you have tens of millions of dollars in your budget, in the money, to take care of this, and it's up to you. You don't have to wait three years to do a big redo up at the Ace Culvert to bring it down and do a big realignment. I know that's going to take years, but you can take care of this within the year yourself, because it's your violation, it's the county's violation, and it's responsible for flooding on my street. Our neighbors on my street built out all the sandbags. Thanks to you and the county, made available for us to go pick up at two sites, and we built out our houses, protected our houses. Only two of 19 homes got water damage. Unfortunately, I was one of them. My next neighbor next to me got other damage. But it's amazing that next to us, the apartments, which you had some people here approximately 15 days ago suggesting that they did a great job with tiger barriers to protect those apartments, they failed. You know they failed. And then within four days, you had ADOT up there, building up the shoulder and putting Jersey barriers. Only nine of 15 of those apartments flooded, okay? So there's a lot to be done. There's a lot that hasn't been done. We requested help with those Jersey barriers over 12 weeks ago. We haven't gotten help, maybe it's eight weeks ago. Okay? I've lost time during this whole mess, okay? But I appreciate if you'd spend a few dollars and correct your own code violations. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Andy Fernandez.
Okay, Andy Fernandez, I have some serious issues here, because the protocol here has been pretty pathetic. You know, I've come here the last few weeks. Last week, I couldn't. I was in the hospital for a few days. But on the 6th of September, I came in, there was no information, none of these City Council Agenda formats. I asked one today, the gentleman here, I think he's the attorney, City Attorney, and he said, oh, you gotta, you need to make a special request? No, you don't. This is legally by law. Like I said, the other gentleman just said, you guys are violating law left and right, Public Information Act, the Public Information Act. Now, you have scenarios, like the gentleman said, I told you, I have video. If I could get me a piece of equipment to show you, I mean, here to show you some video on that false flooding scenario on the Sunnyside area that was manipulated to have the, all the water flood into two segments instead of the natural flow. That was manipulated by, well, the USGS, the city, the county, and a few other federal agencies. And a couple years before that, they were over there on the, right next to Forest Street, my beautiful overpass that I brought to the table 20, back in 1995. Now, that scenario is, they had, Dutchman's Coffee, across the street, there were three water trucks. I caught that on video. They were purposely trying to facilitate a false propaganda media scenario, and they were saying that the flooding scenario was coming into this area. And they had a video camera. So I pulled out my camera, and I started recording, and I started telling them, I know what you guys are doing. I started stating this. All of a sudden, not even 10 minutes later, they packed up and they left. But I have that video. I have the video of the big old, right behind Caleb School, legal excavator area, right where the volleyball court is, where it shows the collapse because of equipment, not because of rain. It's all substantive right there. You manipulate propaganda and ideology to stipulate dollars and dollars, talking millions and millions, hundreds of millions. Like I say, pathetic scenario here on Switzer Canyon for a turnaround, for a million dollars? That's ridiculous. That's BS. Now, the other scenario is, like I said, you know, the violation of these scenarios where you're not putting out these public agendas is appalling. You know, I need to make a request? No, you're supposed to have them up there for the public. Like I stated yesterday at the meeting here for the library scenario, where you're looking at facilitating the, hiring a new individual for the head of the library department. I said, well, you need to be addressed as well, because I've filed numerous complaints between the city and the county libraries, and I have not received any return replies. They violated a lot of scenarios. Some are ethical, some are racist. And the scenario where you have a scenario where people are sleeping there after COVID? No. That should be unacceptable. If they come in, and they're dirty, they haven't bathed in five years, or three days or two weeks, they shouldn't be allowed there either. Now, the scenario I wanted to address was vote no on the minimum wage increase.
Thank you, Andy. We're down to agenda item number six, Proclamations and Recognitions, and this is the September Work Anniversaries. I think our senior deputy city manager is going to take us on them.
...for you.
Yeah.
Get this pulled up here. So, thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. We do have our September Work Anniversaries for you. So we'll get started with our five years. We have Shelley O'Connell, who works in our Police Department as an administrative specialist, as well as Devlin Rackley, who is a Police Emergency Communications Specialist Supervisor, also at our Police Department, celebrating five years. Then we have Michelson Johnson, who is in our Streets section as an operator technician, and then Morgan Mulaney, who works with SBK up in Grants and Contracts as one of their specialists. Continuing with our five years, we have Candace Shiper, who is Creative Services Specialist on our Discover Flagstaff team, and Laney Stevens, who works in Water Services as one of our operators. For 15 years, we have Lad Steele, who is also, typo there, I apologize, a Water Services, not a Woster Services. I wasn't trying to be creative, I promise. But he's one of our operators there. So 20 years, we have John Hickey, also one of our Water Services Supervisors. And then 25 years, we actually have Lawrence Pino. He works in our Parks program right now, in Parks and Recreation. But as you can see by this chart over to the right, he's worked in a lot of different roles within Parks and Recreation. So a vast amount of experience in a variety of areas. But he's celebrating his 27th year with the City of Flagstaff. He, again, has worked in athletics, our recreation centers, an official for adult sports, and also in parks, keeping our grounds clean and our locations ready for any event. The picture that you see on the right is actually something that he's very proud of, and so that's why we're using that photo rather than one of him personally. But Lawrence is an Arizona native, including primarily here in northern Arizona. He has a large family of brothers and sisters with interests in all kinds of sports as a former athlete. Over the year, he has experienced many changes in our community, but is always ready for the next challenge. He's meticulous, dedicated, and observant, but most of all, a joy to call a coworker in that pros group. Without Lawrence, our parties at Ramadas would no longer resemble the image that you see to the right. Thank you, Lawrence, for all that you do to support Team Flagstaff. Just gonna check to see if he was here. Thank you very much. That's actually our only 25-year-plus this month, so we will see you again in October.
Thank you so much, Neil. That, we're down to agenda item seven, our Council Liaison Reports. I will start on this side with Councilmember House.
Thank you. I don't have anything this week, but I will share that the Housing Commission meeting is on Thursday this week, and the Open Spaces Commission will meet on Monday of next week.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple, just one thing to share with the group. I was able to be part of a meeting with the ARC team, the American Rehab Campus, the agents, the company that's bringing forward the detox facility and the long-term treatment facility east of town. And I got to facilitate a conversation between them and Native American connections out of Phoenix, and the conversation went really well. Information was shared about how to bring forward sensitive, culturally sensitive, and appropriate services to a population, given that we're gonna be, they're gonna be serving the northern Arizona region. So that's all I wanted to share with the council, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. Vice Mayor Sweet.
I just have one. Tomorrow, Councilmember Shimoney and I will be attending the Mountain Line Board Meeting, and this will be my first in-person with them. So I'm excited to see everyone face-to-face.
Thank you. I have nothing to report. Councilmember McCarthy?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Aslan?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing real quick. I promise, these aren't high rises going up behind me in Ponderosa Trails. We better get that ladder truck pretty quickly here. I'm actually in Vancouver right now. I'm here with Terry Medexa with the Flagstaff Downtown Business Association, attending the International Downtown Association's annual conference. Very excited to be here, doing some horizontal learning. A lot of downtown's having a lot of issues, and a lot of great, we don't have to reinvent the wheel with a lot of this stuff. So I'll be paying attention, especially to a lot of the stuff coming from similar-sized communities as ours this week. And once again, looking forward to the Coconino Plateau Water Advisory Partnerships annual outing. This year, we're doing a field trip to Grand Canyon to look at the Pinion Plain Mine and the Orphan Mine, and we will be meeting with the Tucson Water Sanitary District, and in collaboration with many students from NEU and other groups. It's gonna be a fun time. That'll be next Friday, September 30th. That's all I have to report right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember Salas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a full report, so please bear with me. So, representing Metroplan, Greater Flagstaff, and as Vice Chair of the Statewide Rural Transportation Advocacy Council, I spent three days in Maricopa City last week for the two-day Rural Transportation Summit, followed by the State Transportation Board meeting, also in Maricopa. I connected with many transportation planners and policymakers, including ADOT Director John Holikowski, and had a photo op with him, and fellow Metroplan Board members Jesse Thompson, former Navajo County Supervisor, and is currently the State Transportation Board Chair, and Coconino County Supervisor Heronimo Vasquez, who's the Vice Chair of Metroplan and my alternate on the ARTAC Board. I also caught up with Victoria Akula from Senator Kristin Sinema's office, and I connected with the U.S. Department of Transportation Deputy Assistant Secretary for Tribal Affairs Orlando Teller, the Federal Transit Administration's Region Nine Regional Administrator Ray Talis, State House Committee on Transportation and Technology Representative Frank Carroll, Mountain Line CEO Heather Dahmlin, FTA General Engineer for Arizona Ariana Valier. I also had the chance to connect with Apache County Supervisor Alton Joe Shepherd, and Mr. Michael Lumayaktewa from the Hopi Department of Transportation. I had the opportunity to present on behalf of Metroplan during the ARTAC Board presentation, where I had the opportunity to discuss our Flagstaff Downtown Mile Projects, for which the State of Flagstaff recently won a $32 million infra, Infrastructure for Rebuilding America grant in a highly competitive process. Some of you may have heard, the grant application committed a local match of $15 million for our city, and $11 million in private contribution from BNSF Railway. Just to recap, Downtown Mile Projects includes Florence Walnut Pedestrian Bicycle Underpass, Milton Road Underpass, BNSF Railway Bridge, Mountain Line Downtown Connection Center, Namtrak Station, Ria de Flag Pedestrian Underpass on East Route 66, and Lone Tree Overpass. I encourage all transportation planners and policymakers to keep working together towards safe, efficient, integrated transportation system infrastructure, and create synergy, where the whole is greater than the sum of its parts. When I addressed the State Transportation Board last Friday, I commended the Arizona Department of Transportation for working with all directors of metropolitan planning organizations and councils of governments, including our Metroplan and NACOG, to come up with joint recommendation on surface transportation block grant formula funding distribution. Director of other, all directors of councils of governments and metropolitan organizations have been working with ADOT staff for the last year on a particular issue. Their goal has been to come up with a joint recommendation on distribution of state transportation block grant STBG funding. What you may not know is that the distribution of STBG funds to small COGS, Council of Governments like NACOG, and MPOs like Metroplan have been flat for over 10 years. Specifically, STBG funding to the state has increased 56% or $40 million, while STBG pass-through funding to small COGS and MPOs like NACOG and Metroplan has increased 0%, which means zero dollars. So all the directors for councils of governments and MPOs are working together with Director Holikowski's team to come up with a joint request. So decisions have not yet been made. Recommendations are still being finalized. However, I also want to mention the collaboration and the work of ADOT's team, composed of Greg Byers, Paul Patani, and Kristin Ward, for working with all of our MPOs and COGS directors. And I also thank the State Transportation Board and ADOT for continuously working with our community to mitigate flooding on highways 180 and 89 due to recent forest fires, burns cars. So that was a productive three-day spend in Maricopa despite the heat. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas, and thank you for advocating for our city on the Rural Transportation Commission and Metroplan. All right. With that, we are down to agenda item eight, our Consent Items. I would like to take both these together and move to approve both Consent Items 8A and 8B as on agendized. As well as C. Yes. Missed that one.
Well, I'll second that for A, B, and C.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy, for keeping me straight. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Down to agenda item 9A, Consideration and Adoption of Ordinance Number 2022-21, an ordinance of Flagstaff City Council authorizing the acquisition of real property from the BNSF Railway Company, providing for delegation of authority, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is Bryce Doty. Happy to, this is the second read for the ordinance. Happy to answer any questions you may have. I can bring up the presentation as well if we need to. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Doty. I move to read ordinance number 2022-21 by title only for the final time.
Second?
Second. Second by Councilmember Solis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. City Clerk?
An Ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the acquisition of real property from the BNSF Railway Company, providing for delegation of authority, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2022-21.
Second?
Seconded by Councilmember Solis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. City Attorney, real quick question. So we have on here number four, approve the real estate purchase and sale agreement. Do we need a vote on that portion?
Yes, Mayor, you do.
Okay, I move to approve the real estate purchase and sale agreement and authorize the mayor to execute the required documents after the effective date of ordinance number 2022-21.
Second?
Seconded by Councilmember Solis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Onward and upward. Down to agenda item 9B. This is the Consideration and Adoption of Resolution Number 2022-43, an Ordinance Number 2022-23, resolution declaring as a public record that a certain document to be filed with the city clerk and entitled Addendum 31 to the Employee Handbook of Regulations, and ordinance amending the Flagstaff City Code Chapter 1-14 Personnel System and the Employee Handbook of Regulations by adopting by reference the certain document entitled Addendum 31 to the Employee Handbook of Regulations to align with the classification, compensation, and performance management changes. And we do have a public speaker on this portion, Andy Fernandez, if you'd like to come on down.
Yes, Andy Fernandez, born and raised in the city of Flagstaff, also Army Corps Engineers. Also, I ran for the city of Flagstaff mayor position, and for the congressional seat here in this region, the first new region, District One. Now, there was some manipulation and corruption with that when you had George Bush bring in Renzi, who lived in Virginia, but that's beside the point. But the scenario here is that, first of all, you give me a three-minute scenario. I look like I'm the only speaker here that's here from the public, not an employee, like yesterday at the library scenario. So you should be allowed to be speaker at least 15 minutes if you're only one person or less than 10. This came out in 1999, it was the Andy Fernandez Rule, to do the three-minute scenario, because I used to address a lot of the areas, a lot of the items, consent contractuals. They would put in nine to 30 items at a top, usually average of 24, smuggling in a lot of top-secret information to line their pockets. So just to give you a heads-up on that, we never, consent contractuals today, I only see three, that was pretty nice, keeping it small, keeping it more transparent. So with this scenario here, as I said, both 9A and B should have been placed in here. It also stipulated the price, the cost of effective scenarios on each segment. Also, these scenarios should be facilitated to the public, like I said. I came over here a couple times, I think three weeks ago, you guys were at a meeting of the League of Cities meeting? Okay, that's great, but the week before, you didn't have a notification that that was happening. I showed up, can't find an agenda. They used to have the agendas outside by the staircase. I go upstairs to the mayor's office, where I used to go get them all the time. I used to give, they used to give me the full staff reports. So I was very informed, so I'd come over here and I'd say, okay, yeah, page 239, paragraph four and not eight, there's these documents to bring this, but you guys saying something else, you know, tricking you guys in lies. All the manipulative, certain benefits for greed. Anyway, so the scenario here is, again, we need to have more transparency. And you shouldn't have a lock on the door to go in there, you can't ring a doorbell to go to the mayor's office, or to go to the city clerks to request any of this information. You know, like we had it before, we used to have them at the libraries. So we should have that information viewable for the full staff reports. You know, we may not have everybody reading it, but at least it's there and available. Here, I say, again, you come up and you have this scenario where you don't let people speak because of this BS rule that came out years ago, again, because I addressed numerous items, and they didn't like that. Okay, I can understand if there's 30 people or 60 people, but if there's only a handful of people, you know, talking seven to 12 people, then you should give them their right to vote, the right to freedom of speech. Like I said, you know, I'm in the U.S. Army, I fought and served for my country for that constitutional right, freedom of speech. Now, Paul, you should understand this, I say, I campaigned for you pretty heavy, and well, for Jimmy. Jimmy, you were lucky I got on board with you, man, you were hanging by a thread. But anyway, we got them campaign sites facilitated, that was great. That was another scenario, they took mine down, they said I couldn't do it, and then they did it themselves. So, again, you need to have full disclosure, stipulate the prices.
Thank you, Andy. With that, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2022-43.
I second.
Seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. I move to read an ordinance number 2022-23 by title only for the final time.
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That carries unanimously. City Clerk?
An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending the Employee Handbook of Regulations and Flagstaff City Code by adopting by reference that certain document entitled Addendum 31 to the Employee Handbook of Regulations, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you, City Clerk. I move to adopt ordinance number 2022-23.
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Sorry, just to clarify, Councilmember Aslan, was that a vote opposed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And that passes 6-1.
No, that's, no, I was saying aye.
Okay, sorry, I was moving fast. So just to clarify then, that was a unanimous vote for record-keeping. All right, we're down to agenda item number 10. This is our public hearing items. 10A is the Consideration and Adoption of Ordinance Number 2022-25, an Ordinance of the City Council of the City Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code Title 11, General Plans and Subdivision, Division 11-10.20, additional procedures for comprehensive plan updates, new elements, and major amendments to the general plan, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and establishing an effective date. Hereby open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Dizzi, thank you, Council. My name is Wesley Welch, I'm an associate planner, I've been working with Tiffany on this, so it's just going to be a little bit of a code cleanup. So, the first proposed amendment is to remove a reference to the public participation procedures within the Flagstaff City Code Title 10 that conflicts with the requirements for the public participation procedures with Title 11, general plans and subdivisions. It's also going to modify a major plan amendment application process procedure to be in alignment with House Bill 2482, which was passed in April, which requires that plan amendments be presented in a city council public hearing within 12 months of the submission of the application. So this is the first section we're going to delete, it's going to be 11-10-20-10.e, which is that all comprehensive plan updates are subject to the public participation procedures established in the section entitled 10, the neighborhood meeting. These are just two conflicting public participation procedures, so we're going to delete that reference, keep it clean. And then we're going to modify Section 11-10-20-20b1 as follows. So as you can see, it used to be where you would hear at a single public hearing every year, and then you'd have the rest of the year to go through the process. Now it just needs to be presented at a city council public hearing within 12 months of data submission of a complete application, just makes it a little cleaner. So these are the three findings for the zoning code text amendments that need to be met, and I'll go over them in the next three slides. The first one is that the proposed amendment is consistent with and conforms to the objectives and policies of the general plan in any applicable specific plan. It's going to support the objectives and policies of the general plan, because it supports the process and procedures for major plan amendments. Finding two is that it won't be detrimental to public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare of the city. It's going to make sure that our city code is in alignment with current state law, and it corrects a conflict between procedures listed in two separate divisions of the code. And finding three is the proposed amendment is eternally consistent with other applicable provisions of the zoning code. This corrects an internal conflict between Title 10 zoning code and Title 11, and updates the city code with the recent legislative changes. So the Planning and Zoning Commission, on a 4-0 vote last week, recommended the city council motion for approval of the zoning code text amendment, Title 11, major regional plan amendment process, as presented by staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll go back, close the public hearing, and move to read ordinance number 2022-25 by title only for the first time.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. City Clerk?
An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff amending the Flagstaff City Code Title 11, General Plans and Subdivision, Division 11-10.20, additional procedures for comprehensive plan updates, new elements, and major amendments to the general plan, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and establishing an effective date.
Excellent, thank you very much. Was this the first time you presented in front of us?
It was, yes, sir.
Well, thank you, you did very well.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, we're moving right along here, we're down to agenda item 11A, Consideration and Adoption of Ordinance Number 2022-26, an Ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the acquisition of real property for open space in the Flagstaff Urban Trail System purposes, providing for delegation of authority, severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, authority for clerical correction, and establishing an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Robert Wallace, Open Space Supervisor for the City of Flagstaff. I hope you probably remember Martininses in my presentation on this ordinance last week. So we don't have a presentation this evening, but if you have any questions, I'm here to be able to answer.
Well, I'm excited for this, so I move to read ordinance number 2022-26 by title only for the first time.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember House. Beat Vice Mayor to the punch. Any further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I apologize for interrupting. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Andy, you want to come down for public participation? And just a reminder, Andy, this is regarding our Flagstaff Urban Trail System acquisition purchase.
Yeah, and just to remember that you said illegally, you didn't have the obligation to give everybody the opportunity to speak, instead of trying to pass a vote through before you call me. She had to remind you, come on, you're supposed to be the chief here. Now regarding the scenario here, again, I tried to access the computer, the city council website, and the computers were having issues, it was a computer website scenario, that is appalling, you had to manipulate, facilitate that scenario in a correct fashion. Also, you need to facilitate a scenario where you have transparency. You're running on transparency as mayor, you better do it. Three o'clock meetings is appalling, you know, you're getting paid. I mean, I ran for mayor, I didn't get paid.
The agendized item is regarding the Flagstaff Urban Trail System.
I was discussing the scenario that people have the right to have, to be here after 5:30, they can't come in at 3:00 when they're at work. So now the scenario here is that, on these properties, unless you have the full staff report, which I used to get, but I don't no more, you should have them at the library. So again, like I stipulated, at least in Flagstaff, they have the full logistic staff agenda, so that people can see what actually is going on, not just a little snippet. So here we have a situation where, again, paper documents, because like I said, two of the last three council meetings, I tried to get online, I couldn't get online. So that's an issue that if, you know, there's a computer technical issues, if you have it on paper, hey, you can review it at your leisure, ain't no problem. Now the scenario here is, again, I just stipulated about putting the staff, full staff reports at East Flag and West Flag, which I actually initiated in 1998, and all up to 2010, it was being facilitated. So we had people that were being aware of what was going on. You had people coming to the meetings, now you have nobody, because at 3:00 PM exactly. That's called not rigging the system. So now we have a situation here where McMillan Mesa, that should have been open space, we fought, and numerous other people fought to keep it open. And the scenario was a rigged scenario, because I brought in the Fourth Street Overpass back in 1995, as well, the recycling program. And I fought for several, three election cycles, to put McMillan Mesa and Fourth Street Overpass separate. The city council, there were corrupt scenarios of, not everyone, but there was a couple of them, manipulating scenarios to facilitate this scenario. So after three elections, they finally, 30 people came up, 33 actually, and said, hey, Andy's been telling you to keep them, put them separate, if it hasn't been in legitimacy, then McMillan Mesa will pass on its own, on its own validity. So finally, the fourth go-around, miraculously, McMillan Mesa failed flat on its face, Fourth Street Overpass, flying colors. Had to fight another seven years, because I wanted the Fourth Street Overpass connectors I-40, I- East and West, three off-ramps, when the small cities all around the northern Arizona have three, and they're a tenth of the size of Flagstaff, it was appalling. So now we have a situation here where, yeah, here, very limited information on the staff on this agenda. You should state where these locations are, how much square footage or acreage, and is it, how much money is coming from that bond that was passed for open space, or has that been already eliminated?
Thank you, Andy.
Then you start doing your job. Thank you.
With that, we do have a motion on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the grant agreement for an Arizona State Parks recreational, I am sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. An Ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the acquisition of real property for open space and Flagstaff Urban Trail System purposes, providing for delegation of authority, severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, authority for clerical corrections, and establishing an effective date.
Thank you, City Clerk. We're down to agenda item 11B, Consideration and Adoption of Resolution Number 2022-46, an approval of grant agreement. A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the award of a grant agreement between the City of Flagstaff and Arizona State Parks Recreational Trails Grant for the Maintenance of Picture Canyon Preserve. Mr. Wallace?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, I'm Robert Wallace again, Open Space Supervisor for the city, and it's nice to be here. Here today, seeking approval for the resolution and grant agreement for the Arizona State Parks that will enable us to accept the Recreational Trails Program Grant that will allow us to support maintenance and restoration at the Picture Canyon Preserve in the amount of $126,270. So I'll just start with a little bit of quick background about the open space section. I'm pleased to share that we'll soon be a permanent team of two, one full-time position, which is mine, that's the open space supervisor position, and a coordinator position that was approved by city council during the last budget cycle, which we are now working with HR to classify and recruit for that position. We were also successful in obtaining temporary funding for a one-year outdoor educational coordinator position with grant funding, so we're also working through the process of hiring for that position as well. To a couple of these efforts, I'm proud to share that we're on track to secure approximately $420,000 in grant funding to support the open space projects this year. These funds are sources that are helping us meet our commitment to the residents to preserve open space and to implement community planning, partnership coordination, equitable access, and the reason that I'm here tonight, property management such as trail maintenance and environmental management with this RTP grant. This funding opportunity through the state will enable the open space section to address some delayed maintenance at Picture Canyon, including the renovation and maintenance of existing trails. It will mitigate and restore damaged areas surrounding trails. This picture here is of an old road here that's within the preserve that occurred, the initial damage occurred before the city purchased this property, so it'll be revegetating places of this nature. It will also work towards enforcing existing rules and regulations with the installation of new signage, and it'll provide interpretation and trail information through interpretive signs and publications. In accepting this grant, we are agreeing to complete the resolution and the signed grant agreement that has been provided for your review. Approving the resolution and grant agreement will provide the $126,270 in grant funds, with a participant match of $30,300 for a total project cost of $156,570. The open space section will provide a $4,500 in-kind cash match, while the participant and volunteer match that the open space section will coordinate will provide an additional $25,800, with plans to complete the project by June 30th of 2025. We will be responsible also for submitting a detailed status quarterly report, and of course, to complete the project deliverables. The map that you see here is a result of a practicum project by Mr. Austin Press. Austin completed this detailed study of the routes of both unauthorized and formal trails at the Picture Canyon, and prepared a report that compared the pros and the cons of social trailing and on recreation and conservation. And it's with no small amount of gratitude that we want to thank Mr. Press for a study that really enabled us to secure this grant and become successful. So this grant does support city goals, it helps maintain So this grant does support city goals, it helps maintain and expand our service level, and it meets both section and community goals, so the section goals that you see listed there, and that also supports the seven PVB priorities and supports the natural environment goals and objectives of the carbon neutrality plan. And then the options for your consideration this evening, to adopt the resolution as submitted and authorize the grant agreement between Arizona State Parks Board and the City of Flagstaff for the recreational trails program grant in the amount of $126,270, with a participant match of $30,300. And this option would allow staff to implement collaborative processes for maintaining and restoring roads and trails at Picture Canyon for the benefit of the community. And then option B, to decline, to adopt the resolution and decline the authorized grant agreement, which would then refuse the grant funds. That's all I have for you today. I'll turn it back over to the council for discussion, but I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Robert. Any questions at this time, council? Well, this one's an easy one for me, but Councilmember Solis?
I have a comment. As the council liaison to the Parks and Recreation Commission, I'm just, I am in awe and filled with gratitude to our pros team for seeking out and securing this grants, leveraging some of our pros dollars, but also with our awesome volunteer resources. So I'm very grateful for all your work, and I am ready to make a motion when it's time, Mr. Mayor.
Well said, and I think it's that time.
I'm honored to move to read resolution number 2022-46 by title only.
I'll second.
House beat you again. Seconded by Councilmember House. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Me, thanks very much.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you, Robert. City clerk.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council authorizing the grant agreement for an Arizona State Parks recreational trails program grant.
I move to adopt resolution number 2022-46.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Solis, seconded by Vice Mayor Sweet. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries unanimously.
I move to authorize the grant agreement between the Arizona State Parks Board and the City of Flagstaff Parks Recreation Open Space and Events Pro Division for the recreational trails program grant to support the maintenance of Picture Canyon Preserve in the amount of $126,270, with a participant match of $30,300.
I'm liking this quick draw game. Keep it up. Seconded by Councilmember House. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That carries unanimously. We're down to agenda item 12A, this is our future agenda item request. Request by Councilmember House to place on a future agenda a discussion about how the city can assist NAU in building better relationships with the neighborhoods. Councilmember House, do you want to present?
Sure, I'll just briefly state, just to be clear where my intentions were with this request, it was really in pursuit of any opportunity that we as council have to both partner in our service to our neighborhoods and partner with NAU, the neighborhoods, and any relevant city divisions to strengthen those relationships that exist, and that certainly can be bolstered into the future. I think there's already a lot of positives within those relationships, but there are also some problems and some areas for improvement, and I'm hoping just to be part of the solutions that can exist there. I'm hoping for council support on this matter and further conversation, but if not, I would just ask for us to look at maybe establishing a task force or team that can delve into this a little bit deeper and start to build up some of those solutions for the future. So, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember House. Councilmember McCarthy, you want to see?
I just wanted to say I'm supportive.
Let me make sure I have this up here.
I'm supportive as well, let me state that. And Councilmember House, this is one of the reasons why I was very enthusiastic and supportive of you joining our council. I know that you bring a different lens to the table and a different constituency, and it's nice when those things overlap, and thank you for your advocacy.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan.
I'll also be in support.
All right, with that, we do have a proper direction to move this fair item forward. Councilmember Solis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a comment. As this move forward to a future agenda item, I would encourage the city manager to invite, to include in the discussion our League of Neighborhoods, as well as our liaison with NAU, Ms. Valeria Chase, and as well as student organizations, as part of a bigger picture discussion, and Downtown Business Alliance as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Solis. Any further discussion on this item?
I'll just say thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember House. All right, with that, we're down to agenda item 13, public participation. We don't have anyone online right now, and no cards on the table, so we'll move along to agenda item 14, informational items, two from mayor, council, and staff, and future agenda item requests. I'll start with Councilmember Solis.
I only have one thing for today, Mr. Mayor. I want to greet our deputy city manager, Shannon Anderson. Happy birthday!
What? Nobody told me that. Happy birthday. All right, Councilmember Aslan.
I'm good, I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy?
Just briefly, I want to say we had an interesting community event this weekend, Pickin' in the Pines Music Festival, and saw several of you out there. It was fun to see you all. Thank you.
Thank you, McCarthy. I also had fun at that event. Lots of dancing and hula-hooping.
Yeah, a lot of good dancing and hula-hooping.
Thank you. I don't have anything further tonight. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, I'll make this quick. Last week, I attended a welcome to Flagstaff event, put on by a nonprofit group called Culture Connection, and it was so good to see international students. It was a great celebration and a wonderful welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief comment, I did ride my bike out to Fort Hill three times this weekend, and it was one heck of a workout. I just wanted to share that riding along Milton was really nice with the bike lane, except for the times of which cars were swerving into the, into me, in the bike lane, and one time of which I was afraid for my life because I didn't know if the person was going to see me and freak out and hit me, or see me freak out and toward back. Unfortunately, they did the latter, where they saw me and rotated back into their lanes. So just wanted to remind everybody that those separated bike lanes work, and a thin strip of paint does not cut it. I very well thought that might be the end of my life, and we were going really slow, too. It wasn't even like we were speeding down Milton. People are just not aware of cyclists, and so I really appreciate all the support of council for bicycle infrastructure. And then I did also take Woodlands, I did the Route 66 route up to Woodlands and then cut over that way, and I thought that was a really nice alternative to Milton, but there's no bike lanes on Woodlands Boulevard. So I went ahead and emailed Jeff Baumann with the city about potentially seeing what it takes to put in some striping, because those vehicle lanes do seem very wide. So I just wanted to give that update to council, I think that would go a long way to create that Woodlands alternative for bicycle commuting. And yeah, it was, otherwise, it was a wonderful ride and I really enjoyed the weekend. But yeah, nice, fast meeting today, everybody. Thank you, and have a wonderful week.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie. Councilmember House?
Thank you. First, I just want to share that I was able to attend the International Peace Day event this weekend. I know the mayor read a proclamation before that, and that was a great opportunity to get out and just engage with that event, as well as the We Sing event that took place pretty much right after, about an hour later. That was absolutely amazing, and I know that there are a lot of city team members who had children or family that were part of that event, and it was just great to see folks part of that. It was absolutely amazing. Lastly, I just wanted to share what I think is a very exciting opportunity that was shared with me in a conversation last week, for the upcoming 30th anniversary of the show Living Single, and an opportunity for Flagstaff to engage in a celebration of one of our own, Flagstaff actress, philanthropist, director, and producer Erica Alexander. For those who maybe don't know, she was born in Winslow, Arizona, and raised in Flagstaff until she was, I believe, 11 years old. And there's actually what's known as the Maxine Shaw effect from her character from Living Single, where she played an attorney that has inspired generations of women of color in particular to enter the legal and political arenas. So what was presented was an opportunity for Flagstaff to engage both as part of the film industry, which I know Councilmember Aslan just encouraged some of that conversation recently, as well as her educational pursuits and so forth. So a lot of opportunities to engage with both NAU, City of Flagstaff, the economic development, and all different divisions that can be part of celebrating that 30th anniversary, as well as Ms. Alexander as a Flagstaff local. So I will be looking forward to sharing more on that in the weeks and months to come.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilmember House. And Councilmember McCarthy had another indication.
Well, just a quick follow-up to Mr. Shimonie's comments. At Pickin' in the Pines, I noticed there was a lot of bicycles parked out there this year, more than I'd ever seen. So I think it's another indication that a lot of people are transitioning over to bicycles.
Super cool. Thanks, Councilmember McCarthy. With that, anything from your city manager?
No, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Well, then, at 4:07 PM, meeting adjourned.